And the Lions won.
Mr. Jackson.
I wanted to get to talk to him.
Oh, we did.
We didn't have it in yet.
Like almost an hour.
Oh, no.
Okay, good evening. I am going to call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Thank you for everyone who is here this evening. I'm going to start by introducing myself. I am President Lauren Christensen, so welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anupam Chiksedu. Thanks for being here.
Good evening. I'm Judy Westra. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, Patrick Keough. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Patty McCoy, thank you for coming out tonight. It's marginal evening, but thank you for spending your evening with us.
Hey, I'm Cheryl Picard, and it's nice to see everybody here tonight. Thank you for coming.
Dr. Merritt, can you introduce yourself and your team?
Yes, good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson. We want to thank her for being here, taking our minutes. We have Ms. Carly Raze, who is helping us this evening with beyond technology, also the candidates, and Mr. John Krieger, who takes care of all of our video needs and our technology moving forward. I'd like to ask the remaining members of the team to introduce themselves to you.
Good evening, Curtis Tiskowitz, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. Welcome.
Good evening, Beth Rail, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, Abdullah Madyon, Chief Human Resources Officer.
Welcome, everyone. Liz Vartainan Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent, Student Family Engagement.
Thank you. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance should apply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on to the adoption of the agenda, number 25-10-19. May I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we adopt our agenda, Action 251019.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Treasurer Keough and seconded by Trustee Sodu. Those in, I'm going to call for a vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries 6-0. On to our next topic at hand. It's Citizens Comments. I have one here with Michael Woodyard.
Good evening. My name is Michael Woodyard. I live in Canton at 45450 Parkdale. On August 22nd, just five weeks ago, Superintendent Merritt and the athletic directors of all three high schools received a letter from an attorney alerting them that a local politician was trying to give money to the booster clubs in exchange for a public endorsement of their campaign. Now, among other things, this such a scheme would, of course, violate district policy. It would be a misdemeanor violation of the Michigan Campaign Finance Act. And beyond that, it would set a terrible precedent. So, of course, the attorney was assured that booster clubs were aware they were not to accept money from politicians, and they would not. So imagine my shock on Friday during the Plymouth Wildcats' homecoming game when I heard the announcer say, "We'd like to thank Joe Barone for his support of Wildcat football. Vote Joe Barone for Judge." Now, beyond breaking the law and violating district policies, endorsing a candidate in a local election, I think, is quite simply an abandonment of the fundamental principles of fairness and unbiased education that are at the root of the district's mission. The integrity of local elections is at stake. I would believe that even if I were not a candidate for this seat, which I am, but more importantly, I'm a community member, and this action, endorsing a candidate, calls into integrity, calls into question the integrity of the PCCS leadership. And that's not even considering the actual endorsement that was made. A judge is supposed to be above reproach in all that he does. He is supposed to scrupulously follow laws and policies and ethical guidelines in every circumstance. Mr. Barone ignored the law and violated the district's rules and policies just because it suited him. He took advantage of the students of this educational community for his own personal gain. And yet, this is the person the district chose to endorse. Now, even if a politician chooses to ignore the rules and take advantage of the kids at the schools for his own gain, the district must not condone this. Taking money to endorse a politician may have been a regrettable mistake, but now that you're aware of this outrageous meddling in local elections, you must immediately and publicly rescind this endorsement and institute robust safeguards to ensure that other politicians can't do what Joe Barone has done and that the district's students are never again made to be the pawns of a grasping politician's blatantly impermissible election strategy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes our portion for Citizens Comments. On to the special meeting topic, our School Board Candidate Interviews. So I want to give a little background before we kick things off here. The purpose of this evening's meeting is to fill the vacant Board of Education seat from the resignation of Trustee Wilson earlier this month, or last month now, it's September. According to our District Policy number 142.5, the Board has the responsibility of advertising, interviewing applicants, and appointing a candidate within a 30-day window of that vacancy. So, starting on September 11th, the position was posted on the district website, on all social media platforms, and sent out through our Building Principals newsletters. We also mentioned that during our regular Board Business Meetings, during the President's Report as well. The application window closed on September 25th of this year, and the Board received a total of 10 applicants, two who have since withdrawn. So we have eight applicants total. This evening, we will begin the process of interviewing each of these candidates. So, just in case you were wondering how we determine the order in which we are actually interviewing the candidates, we used a random name generator. It's, the website is actually random.org, which randomly selected the order in which the candidates will be interviewed this evening. We'll start out, it's kind of a two-part interview. So we have a first round where we will begin with introductory questions to each of the potential candidates here today, and we have two follow-up questions as part of that round. After that initial questioning, Board members will vote for their top three candidates. So we have our own score sheets here. We're going to put down, I just want to point out to the Board members, there's a ranking and a point system indicated on those voting sheets. So we'll tally our top three candidates and send that over to Mr. Tiskowitz, who's actually going to be our resident tallier today, and share with us basically the top three that our team had selected. Those three finalists will be announced, and then we will move on to the second round of questioning. After these interviews take place, we'll go through a similar voting exercise where we will rank the last three, or the top three candidates in order of preference, and then we'll send that over again to Mr. Tiskowitz for tallying. And then I will gladly announce our selection this evening for that vacant Board seat, upon which, at the end of the meeting, that candidate will actually be sworn in in as a Board Member of our team by Dr. Merritt. That's correct, yes. Okay? Yes.
Just remind them about the materials, or remind everybody about the materials we've received and we've already reviewed.
Sure, sure. Okay, thank you. Treasurer Keough just kindly reminded me, so as part of this interview process of filling this vacancy, the administration has collected all of the letters of intent and resumes and shared all of your information with each of the Board members that we have reviewed leading up to this meeting. So we look forward to learning more about you and kind of digging into this interview process. So thank you for reminding me of that. An additional reminder too, I know some of us are in the audience. We appreciate you being here and being a part of this effort. And those of you at home who are watching this, but I also want to kindly remind everyone to allow each candidate their time to speak, and we appreciate your support.
Just a question. How long does each candidate get for each question?
That's a great question. We didn't really put a big time limit on that, but we were gauging around a few minutes per question would be acceptable. Okay? Thank you. Any other questions about the process? No? Okay. Without further ado, I think Ms...
Right, I'm going to take our candidates back to our waiting area.
Perfect. Great, thank you.
We just add another one at the bottom?
Yeah, if we can add her name to the bottom, that's fine.
If I want to just say publicly.
Okay, okay. We just learned that a candidate is here who we had thought was withdrawing their application, but they are here for consideration. It is Ms., I'm going to pull up the name, Christine Turbo. So we will add her to the bottom of our score sheets for consideration.
I should have known when they moved this. I'm like, why are they moving the board?
We thought it would be easier to sit down, okay?
And I told, I told the one mother, I said, "Oh, I just don't want to be first or last."
Sorry, ran the number.
Thank you so much.
Can you pull the microphone a little bit closer?
Absolutely.
We're having trouble hearing you. Okay, is this better?
A little bit closer.
Is this better?
Yes, yes, that's better. Thank you.
All right. Do we want to get started, number Sodu? Do you want to ask the first question, please?
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Please begin by sharing why you are interested in serving as a member of the PCCS Board of Education and how you're qualified. Second part to that is, in your response, please include how your involvement in the school community has impacted the school district by identifying a time when you worked on a committee, project, or initiative that benefited the district as a whole, not an individual classroom or school.
Okay. Would it be okay to read from my notes? Absolutely. Is that okay? Okay. That way it won't be, that won't be so rushed. Okay, so I just wanted to begin by giving honor to the superintendent and the entire School Board for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Myla, and I'm a Canton resident, and I have a deep interest in the, in our school community. I have three children, 25, 23, and 16, and they've all attended Plymouth Canton Community Schools. My 11th grader is a student at Canton High School. And as a parent with children in the district, I've seen firsthand the wonderful opportunities our schools provide, and I'm excited about the chance to give back and contribute to our community's success. So, I'm a Senior Accounts Payables Analyst at Ypsilanti Township. I've been there for 32 years. And as the Senior Accounts Payables Analyst, I play a crucial role in maintaining the financial integrity of Ypsilanti Township. And I do that by maintaining accurate financial records, reconciling accounts, solving discrepancies, and ensuring compliance with financial policies and regulations, which I believe this experience has provided me with a strong foundation in financial management, attention to detail, and the ability to analyze data effectively, which I believe those are skills that are crucial for making informed decisions regarding budget allocations and financial planning on the Board. I want to begin with, working at Ypsilanti Township, I have had the privilege of serving as the Vice President of the Union Executive Board of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, or ASME. And I gained valuable experience in leadership, negotiation, and strategic planning. And during my tenure, I was actively involved in representing the interests of our members, collaborating with colleagues to address workplace issues, and developing policies that supported fair wages, safe working conditions, and employee benefits. This role allowed me to work closely with the diverse group of professionals, build consensus, and make decisions that positively impacted our community. It also taught me the importance of advocacy, effective communication, and the ability to navigate complex challenges, skills that I believe will be highly beneficial in serving on the School Board. I also, with my passion for education, I currently also volunteer and work at the Washtenaw Community Testing Center, Washtenaw Community College Testing Center. My experience working at a college testing center has given me a deep understanding of the importance of standardized assessments, academic integrity, and the diverse needs of students. In this role, I've worked closely with students from various backgrounds, helping them navigate testing requirements, accommodations, and the pressures of academic evaluations. This experience has enhanced my ability to handle complex tasks, ensure fairness, and support students' educational journeys. These tasks are directly relevant to serving on the School Board, where I can advocate for fair assessment practices, support diverse learning needs, and help create policies that prioritize the success and well-being of all students. To answer the question, my greatest representation of my dedication to helping our community come from my kids. I've also, I've always worked hard to establish a supportive and enriching environment through my active participation in their education, extracurricular activities and school events, but just not for them, but for all the kids in our district. I feel that by devoting time and energy to their development, I'm helping to achieve the larger objective of creating a solid, encouraging community for all families. My son was, played football at Canton High School all his four years, and he had the opportunity to becoming the first black starting quarterback at Canton High School. And I believe that representation matters. So when we went out to do the different fundraisings and we had to go door-to-door, it was just good to see the support of the community. Because of his great education at PSEP, he went on to get his bachelor's degree, and he is currently working in municipal government as well, at the Treasurer's Office in Ypsilanti Township as well. My daughter, my daughter is a student and a product of Plymouth Canton Schools. She is currently a junior at U of M, University of Michigan, with the concentration of Human Resources Management, I believe. And so with that, I just wanted to finally say I'm deeply committed to ensuring that our schools provide a highly quality, welcoming, and supporting environment for all of our students. I believe my experience, dedication, and genuine enthusiasm for education will be beneficial to the Board. If given the opportunity, I am eager to collaborate, listen to our community's needs, and contribute to our district's ongoing success and growth. Thank you. And I think I missed one question about...
The second part of the question, or?
I think it was in regards to...
I can repeat, I can repeat if that's okay? Additionally, I do want to point out that we have a printed copy right at your seat too, if you want to read along, if that's helpful to see.
Oh.
So I'll just read it for you.
Sorry.
No, no, that's okay. I should have let you know that.
So in your response, please include how your involvement in the school community has impacted the school district by identifying a time when you worked on a committee, project, or initiative that benefited the district as a whole, not an individual classroom or school.
Okay. I have not joined any particular committee in the community. I just know that I do participate in a lot of the events that the district has. So I always make sure that at any particular time, my children give back to the ICE Festival that Plymouth has, the Canton Food Trucks. I make sure that they try to gain memberships at the Canton Summit. Me personally, I have not joined any particular committee, but I have volunteered with the schools' majority because of, like I said, my dedication to the kids. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Let's move on to question number two.
Okay.
You want me to go first, or you?
You.
Okay.
You're first.
Okay. Discuss what you see as the three most important responsibilities of the School Board and your perspective on the role of a School Board Member.
One more time, repeat the question again. So, well, I guess that one at a time. So what is the...
You also have them written right in front of you as well.
So I just have this. Oh, I'm so sorry. So that's why, I apologize.
No, no, we're sorry.
Yeah, that's why I was just going to read this. I'm like, I'm just going to go to the bottom of your paper. Oh. Oh, I grabbed it with my notes. Cheater.
And we're happy to read it to you as well.
Okay. All right, it was too far back. Okay.
Okay, so the second question is, discuss what you see as the three most important responsibilities of the School Board and your perspective on the role of a School Board Member.
Okay, so I did write down some of the things that I did see. One of the responsibilities that I saw was actually from the superintendent in regards to the increase in claims for verbal and, both verbal and digital harm messages, I think. And so I think one of the most important responsibilities definitely are the children, the safety of the children, inclusion and equity, and also mental health. I do know that one of the things that, the challenges that I have seen as a parent is the academic recovery from post-COVID. Just through my eyes, that many of the districts are dealing with learning gaps caused by the pandemic. And so addressing the learning loss and ensuring that all students have the support to catch up, I think, is definitely one of the responsibilities that I feel that the School Board is or should continue to address. And also with mental health, I think, not just for the students, but also for the teachers and the staff. During the pandemic, I think everyone was affected. That's part of the School Board or the teachers. And so I think the safety, the mental health, and ensuring that the academic recovering gap is closed a little bit. Okay, thank you.
So the next question that we have here is, what do you see as the opportunities and challenges for this district going forward? And please be specific.
Okay. And I probably mentioned it the first time about the challenges with the academic gap. Again, definitely the DEI, I believe, with the growing changes and the many challenges that we see as a community involvement is definitely something that the School Board or the community can address a little bit more because I feel that the more you know, the more you grow, and that we should probably also establish more channels for the district or the schools by maybe doing surveys in different forums to open up more discussion and more engagement with the parent-teacher, with the PTA. I think that if we, to ensure that our voices are heard. And I think the School Board can probably, one of the challenges is maybe visiting the schools more, visiting the classrooms more, or speaking with teachers on their own turf.
Okay.
Ms. Christensen, they're asking if you could please announce the name of the person.
Yes, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name, oh, I thought I...
You did introduce yourself.
Yeah, oh, okay. Thank you so much. So it's Myla Harris, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Myla. That concludes the first round of our interview questions. So we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Share your thoughts.
And leave this here, right?
Yes, yes, leave the questions there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. All right. Hakeem Osarian?
Hashem.
Hashem Osarian?
Yes.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity for having me. My name is Hashem. I live in Canton. Proud parent of three boys in Tonda Elementary. I'm very excited to be here and supporting the Board and initiatives and identifying opportunities.
Great, great. Well, thank you for being here. So we have a series of questions. They're actually printed right in front of you too, for reference, if you want to take a peek, but we will ask them in order here. So starting off with the first question, please begin by sharing why you are interested in serving as a member of the PCCS Board of Education and how you are qualified. And then the second part to that is, in your response, please include how your involvement in the school community has impacted the school district by identifying a time when you worked on a committee, a project, or initiative that benefited the district as a whole, not necessarily an individual classroom or school.
First of all, I'm deeply committed to the success and development of our children in the community. I currently work for the City of Detroit. I'm the Strategy and Engagement Initiative Manager for the Mayor's Workforce Board. I have experience in workforce development, identifying systems and models that would help develop career pathways, work with school districts, educational institutions, to identify skill gaps and help develop pathways for students to transition from, into employment and developing their learning objectives and their career models. You know, I've been involved with the city. My background's in workforce development. I'm also a PhD candidate at Michigan in industrial engineering. My research is focused on synergies and opportunities for optimizing workforce systems and educational institutions for collaboration to enhance the equality and the skill level for employment for our next generation, especially with the advancement of new technologies. My, I've been involved in the educational system in the City of Detroit, new to the Canton area. This is new territory for me. I've been here since pre-COVID. Still trying to work my way through community engagement and navigating the educational system of Plymouth Canton in order to enhance the opportunities for my children.
Okay, thank you. Question number two.
Discuss what you see as the three most important responsibilities of the School Board and your perspective on the role of a School Board Member.
First of all, policy development, ensuring, developing policies and ensuring that, you know, any policy, existing policy is followed thoroughly. And also oversight, evaluation of student performance, and identifying models and working with the Board to leverage existing models and funding opportunities to enhance the quality of education of our next generation. Also, financial oversight and ensuring that, you know, tax dollars are being efficiently utilized in addition to fiscal responsibility, evaluation of the superintendent's departments of school systems.
Question three. Okay.
What do you see as the opportunity?
What do you see as the opportunities and challenges for this district going forward?
One of them is, I see that talking to members of the community is the mental health of our children. This is a challenge that, you know, I'm passionate about and I would like to address, especially after COVID. And also the educational gaps that currently exist across different classes of society. And also the biggest challenge, which is my, my research is focusing on, is enhancing and bridging the gap between technological advancement, integration of AI, and working with school systems, educational institutions to bridge the gap, to amend and modify our curriculums and for, so that our students are well-prepared for the next phase when they transition from college to high school, college, and then the employment world.
Okay, that concludes our three questions.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate you joining us today. Hello, good evening. Up next, we have Rockland Johnson. Thank you for joining us. If you want to let you know, we have a copy of the three questions we're gonna ask you sitting right in front of you as well, if you want to reference that, but we will kind of go round robin and ask those questions to you in just a moment. Okay?
Welcome. I'll start with the first question. Please begin by sharing why you are interested in serving as a member of the PCCS Board of Education and how you are qualified. Part two of that question is, in your response, please include how your involvement in the school community has impacted the school district by identifying a time when you worked on a committee, project, or initiative that benefited the district as a whole, not an individual classroom or school. Again, you've got that question in front of you if you want to refer to it for the details.
Okay. I'd like to thank everyone for allowing me to be here first. Rockland Johnson is my given name. Most people call me Rocky. Kind of interesting. To say that I want to be on this board is a gross understatement. I want to be here. I immerse myself with almost all knowledge that I can swallow for this position. I have a true passion for serving those people in our community, in our schools. Through the 20 years of service in the community, I've sat on numerous boards for youth organizations, sports in general. I'm an active member of the Canton Chamber of Commerce. I'm one of the newest members of the Plymouth Chamber of Commerce. I am a business owner for the past 20 years, and I'm happy to say we're now in our third generation with my middle son Dominic joining us. In the past, I have led organizations and fostered a community of just being able to build. I can tell you that every board and every organization I've been on, we've always increased the number of people there. We do this by getting leadership to get involved and then getting people the ability to lead others, trusting in them to do the right thing. And with transparency and communication as the pillars of what we do. An example of this leadership is this first time when I said, well, this is gonna be for an organization, but I think it speaks to the whole of a larger group of the district. I was the very, as a sophomore year of my oldest son Marco, and the organization is Canton High School Football. He brought home a helmet that we were supposed to be using, and I saw the helmet, and it was technology that I would have used 30 years ago when I played. And no way was I gonna let my son use that helmet. Working with them, knowing that we don't have the budgets there available, I worked through a couple of different suppliers, Riddell USA is one of them, and came up with a buying program that gave parents the opportunity to supply the equipment needed to play the sport at their own cost. This came with some great, no way this is going to happen. The time that the head coach looked at me and said, Rocky, there's no way this is going to work. Just put it out there and let's see what happens. When parents are driven to get their children the best experience, and when they do that experience and they are driven, they find that their work gives the whole of a group a better experience, the more work that they're willing to put in. Fitting night came along. We were in Phase Three at Canton. There was a line out the hallway, down another hallway, and outside with parents willing to purchase the equipment. We went from having hardly enough equipment to field the team to have an abundance of it, so much so that we were able to give kids of lesser, of need, let's just put it that way, top-of-the-line gear. They didn't have to purchase it because we bought so many of them, they were giving us equipment at the end of it. That's one example of something that I've done. I think I probably have missed a couple of points there, but as far as qualifications go, I think that I am qualified to sit in this. I have a lot of experience. I have probably hours of sitting in this room by myself, watching, learning, admiring, and understanding what you guys do. And then understand that if I was in that, I would always say, I would ask a different question here. I would ask for a different viewpoint. It's not my place yet, but I hope one day it will be. But as far as qualifications, I think that would answer question one.
Thank you.
Okay. Question number two. Discuss what you see as the three most important responsibilities of the school board and your perspective on the role of a school board member.
As I understand it, the role of the school board is threefold. One is to guide and help manage the superintendent and make policies. The second one would be making policies. Policies should be reviewed, changed, and deleted if needed to fit the society, the school, the district, the students, the faculty, our whole community. And thirdly is to manage a budget. And manage it to a point where we are getting everything we can, every drop, every penny, out of the budget for the betterment of our district. Those are the three rules.
Our next question here is, what do you see as the opportunities and challenges for this district going forward? Please be specific.
The largest challenge that I see this district have is the culture in which we have. I'm a product of this district. I graduated from Salem in 1995. After doing corporate roadshow in my earlier professional career, we moved back to Canton, Michigan, because we wanted our children, very young at the age, to take into the same community in which we came from. The school district is much different now, and probably sometimes for the good. The culture of doing the right thing with total transparency to the community, saying what you mean, meaning what you say. I think building the culture of we can do better is the number one thing that we face. Secondly, budgeting. Budgeting is a situation that many parents in our district have no idea. If you read the social media, which will drive you crazy sometimes, but if you read it, people always ask, where does the money go? I can assure you that it is spent, and I can assure you it's very expensive to do what we do in this district. However, are there better ways? I would like to explore those ways and find out. And then involvement. Something that I've noticed over the last few years is a very big decline in student involvement in school spirit. We see people do different things at the district because it does not disrupt the flow of traffic, i.e. an example, we have pep rallies for homecoming games a week, two weeks after the homecoming game. We have multiple games on the district where kids are choosing which one is the more popular game to go to instead of supporting their school. It's been my experience that there are ways around it, and a lot of red tape at the high school. I'd like to look at that as well. There's so many things that could be done. And there's also some really good things that we are doing. So those are the things that I'd like to do.
Okay, that concludes our three questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you.
We have Amina Ahmed. Amina, I want to let you know that we have a copy of the questions in front of you, but each of us are going to ask those questions round robin. And I will kick us off with the first question if you're ready.
Sure, sounds good.
Okay. So question number one, please begin by sharing why you are interested in serving as a member of the PCCS Board of Education and how you are qualified. And within your response, you should include how your involvement with the school community has impacted the school district by identifying a time when you've worked on a committee, a project, or initiative that benefited the district as a whole, not just an individual classroom or school.
First of all, thank you so much for this opportunity. I really appreciate it, and I want to extend my gratitude to not only Sean Wilson, who served so well, but all of you. I know it takes a lot of dedication and commitment to our kids. I want to serve on the PCCS Board of Education, and I'm honored to be considered because my heart is with the kids and with the students in our community as a whole. And I believe that our public schools are the anchor for building a thriving community. I'm not a fan when we lose children to other educational opportunities, and I understand that sometimes that's necessary and that each child should go where it is best for them, but I fundamentally believe that strong public schools are a building block of our community, and I believe that, and I'm committed to working hard to make them even better than they are right now. And in terms of involvement in the school district, I've served in a number of different capacities, both at specific buildings, but from your question, it seems like you want a response about something that affects the district. And so one of the things, it's been a while, but one of the things that I'm really proud of is my service on what used to be C-Delt. And it's really, I'm old, but it's really exciting to see that some of the things that we brainstormed and discussed are actually now implemented. And now no one needs a C-Delt in some ways because those things are just part of policy and have been implemented. So that's something I'm really proud of. One question I should have asked about process, do we have a timer for these or are we just like going as long as what's happening? So we...
I'm used to the timer.
Right. We have, we do not have a timer. To answer your question, we're guessing roughly, you know, three to five minutes per question, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Onto question number two.
All right, discuss what you see as the three most important responsibilities of the school board and your perspective on the role of a school board member.
Okay, only three. So I think the three most... Was that me?
That was me.
Oh, sorry. I think the three most important responsibilities of the school board are, you know, finding and acting as the body that employs the superintendent, who then is in charge of the entire district. So that's definitely one of them. And along with that goes, you know, with the superintendent, setting the vision and goals for the district. So another thing that the school board is definitely very responsible for and is extremely important is setting the policies for the district. And the third thing that I would say is adopt, well, I guess drafting, adopting, passing a budget that is not only balanced, but is sustainable, and one that allows the implementation of the policies, the goals, the vision that hopefully everyone has set together. Did, sorry, is, I, the second part of it, I think I skipped your perspective on the role of a school board member. Is it okay to continue with that? Sorry. I was so worried about like just sticking to three that I forgot that part. And in terms of my perspective on the role of a school board member, I believe that the school board as a body is a team, and just as the public school should be an anchor in the community, the school board is the body that represents those public schools. So they are advocates for the district, but more importantly, they are there to make sure that each child in the district succeeds. And that's not by micromanaging or doing things like that. It's by having a really strong partnership with the superintendent and ensuring that they set the superintendent up to succeed, and that everything else they do is diligent and responsible and empathetic. And also, I guess I should add, I would say, you know, current with the times, like even if they're not, I mean, I'm not, for instance, a professional educator, so not that every school board member is a professional educator, but one would hope that they would take the time to be on top of current data and research on what makes effective schools and effective school boards.
Okay, we have the third question.
So what do you see as the opportunities and challenges for this district going forward?
I think it's both an opportunity and a challenge that we see the demographics of the district change. And so there's a number of things. I think overall, as a society, we're seeing that we have more of an aging society, and we're seeing less school-aged children in some ways. So that's, you know, it's a challenge because obviously our tax revenue is based on how many children we have enrolled in the district. So that's one thing. Another thing about the changing demographics is that if we pick up, flawed as it may be, but if we pick up the census data, we can see that there's a wave of diverse students moving into the district because their families are moving here. And so that's a unique opportunity because diversity, in my opinion, brings richness, but it also can be a challenge if we're not equipped to have a culturally responsive district. And currently, I'm really pleased to see the movement in the legislature, legislature that has been supportive of public education, but it's, I've also seen the times when the district has really had to cut back and has had to fight for every single dollar. And so I think that's like almost a continuous challenge because you can never, you're, you know, you're a school board member, you're an educator, you're not enlancing necessarily making the laws and passing the budgets, but you have to then work within those budgets. And more recently, something that I think is going to be a growing challenge is the data on the effects of screens and technology. And I think the district will probably have to adjust how they've approached that so far. Where, whereas, you know, like we're finding things like taking notes by paper and pen makes kids learn better, or the fact like how distracting screens can be. And that's not to say that we should go back to, you know, like stone tablets or something, but just that we should look at the data and think about what's the best way to help our students succeed.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. That concludes our three questions. We appreciate you being here.
Good evening.
Hello, welcome.
My name is Najwali.
Hello, thank you. We are going to ask you the three questions. We have a hard copy... We are going to ask you the three questions. We have a hard copy printed in front of you for reference as well. And we'll start round robin.
I'll start first.
Sure.
Please begin by sharing why you are interested in serving as a member of the PCCS School Board and how you are qualified. In your response, you should include how your involvement in the community has impacted the school district by identifying a time when you worked on a committee, project, or initiative that benefited the district as a whole, not an individual classroom or school.
Okay, so I have been in education for over 20 years, so this is why I have a genuine interest in being on the school board. I believe in advocating for the rights of students equally. I have not been involved in the PCCS community. I am a resident. I've been here for five years. I have one child in high school. I have not worked on any projects in the Plymouth Canton Community Schools at all, but I do have an interest in helping make decisions for the things that we're doing for this community. I am a social and restorative justice advocate and just would like to have that opportunity to be able to do that on this board. Advocate for students, equality in education and basically hoping that, you know, I'll have, have the ability to make the right decisions on this board to benefit the students of this community. But in all honesty, I have not worked on a committee or project or initiative in this district in particular.
Question number two, discuss what you see as the three most important responsibilities of the school board and your perspective on the role of a school board member.
Ensuring that the district is providing viable and guaranteed curriculum for our students and offering an equitable opportunity for students, for all students equally, regardless of, without having any hesitations or reservations on race, gender, nationality, social orientation, any of that. I also believe that it's critically important for us to focus on student safety and student success and achievement in the field of education and making those right decisions in that way. And just three most important things, I think being in the governing body that ensures the student success, you know, while they're here in our schools, hoping to look for something positive and effective, positive and effective change that can benefit this community. There are, you know, different, there's a large, very large and diverse community here living in Canton and I believe that it's important that all the students are serviced equally and receiving the services that they need. So again, just being an advocate for the students with no hesitation or reservations on whom they are and hoping that we're able to provide as a team what the staff needs, the stakeholders, involves, parents, and communities.
Thank you.
So the, the next question that we have is, what do you see as the opportunities and challenges for this district going forward? And please be specific.
Opportunities and challenges, I think, I do believe that with the ever-growing English language learning population, we need to find the right resources in order to be able to accommodate for those students. I also think that there has to be like curriculum that helps, that's comprehensive, that helps support those students. Diversity, equity, and inclusion needs to be a little bit more evident. This is something that I can see being a challenge with the new population of students that are coming in, whether they're immigrants, whether they're moving in from, coming into this community from under development, under developed communities. And then maybe opportunities, just being that, having an individual on the board, I think, for this district who comes from a different perspective, who has a different lens on the way they preview things. Again, as a restorative and social justice advocate, I believe it's important to understand that somebody has the strength to be able to do that. That is a wonderful opportunity, but also in the same sense, a challenge, again, with the, with the students that we're servicing in this community and the families that we're servicing in those communities. I work in an urban district. I see what's happening in those communities and the difference between the community there and the school district that I work at in comparison to this district. We're slowly moving in that direction where it's becoming more students with challenges, educational challenges. So we can provide them with the comprehensive support that they need. I think that that would be a victory, not just for the students themselves, but their parents, their families, and our district as a whole. That's all.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes our three questions. We appreciate you being here.
Appreciate it.
Hello, I'm Paul Luskin. How are you doing?
Good evening. All right, thank you for being here. So we are going to start off with our three questions. I want to let you know, Mr. Luskin, that we have a copy of those questions right in front of you for reference, but we'll gladly ask those. And I'll start with question number one if you're ready.
Yeah.
Please begin by sharing why you are interested in serving as a member of the PCCS Board of Education and how you are qualified. And within your response, you should include how your involvement in the school community has impacted the school district by identifying a time when you've worked on a committee, a project, or an, or an initiative that benefited the district as a whole, not necessarily just a classroom or a school.
All right, great. Well, thank you. It's an honor to be here. So it's increasingly apparent to me as my children go through the school system and just watching around the country as, in our polarized society, as schools and teachers and school boards seem increasingly, you know, under attack a lot of times, that the making great schools and operating schools doesn't just happen. You know, it needs people to step up and, and help defend those institutions and, and put in the, the effort to, to help make them great and support our, our teachers and, and our, our system. So that, that really motivated me to become more involved. I haven't necessarily been super involved in the school district in the past in, in terms of a, a, a project where I supported the, the district. You know, I, I chaperoned my, my son at sixth grade camp for a week. So if you've been around a, a, a large group of sixth grade boys, that's, it's quite a handful. So it was a real privilege for me to, to, to be part of, part of that event for the, the week and, and help the, the teachers and counselors with that, that event. So let me see, in terms of just how I'm qualified, I can talk through that. I, I think I bring a lot of skills and experiences that would be useful for, for a school board. I, I manage projects in the tens of millions of dollars, so, so financial management and, and hard decisions around executing around limited resources is something I'm, I'm very used to. I've, I've managed staff, so I'm, I'm familiar with the, the challenges of, of staffing, hiring and firing and everything associated with recruiting of great people and, and maintaining a great staff that's, that's motivated to, to do a great job. I'm used to dealing with outsourced services, large contracts that I know the, the school system has to enlist the services of many different, different vendors. So that's, that's something that I've, I've dealt with on a, on a large scale. Facility issues, so when, when my company set up a, a new facility in Metro Detroit, I was a, a site lead and supported our real estate organization in terms of setting up a new facility and, and maintaining that facility and being a, a customer of, of, of that. So I've, I've had exposure to the, the sorts of challenges that, that you have with, with facilities. I've, I'm experienced in, in working in a board structure. I've been on a corporate board. I, I set up a corporate subsidiary where I was part of setting up new policies and, and governance. I've been on a nonprofit board when I served a, a term for the National Advanced Mobility Consortium. So I, I think I, I check a lot of boxes in, in terms of having the sorts of skills. I would expect that would be useful for a, a school board member.
The second question is, discuss what you see as the three most important responsibilities of the school board and your perspective on the role of a school board member.
Sure. So when a school board becomes very important is when major events happen in the, the community. So obviously, we all remember a few years ago in the pandemic when there were really tough decisions to, to be made in terms of having school open or closed, how, how to deal with continuing the, the children's education like that. So, so it's those times when you get the really weighty decisions where half the public's going to be very unhappy with you either way and you have to be a leader and, and make tough decisions with the, the best information that you have available. I think the, secondly, it would be around the, the accountability that you have to oversee with the, the, the school administration. They're, they're the ones doing the real work and, and I'm, I'm sure Norma doing a, a great job of it, but everybody performs better with being accountable to somebody. And you have to ask the probing questions and, and making sure things are, are, are being done according to the, the way they were promised or, or looking for ways that, that maybe you can steer them in a, in a better direction. And I would say beyond that, it's just the, the, the day-to-day oversight of, of the operations, making sure things are, are happening according to budget, that, the, the sorts of, say, hiring decisions that are being brought to you or the improvements that need to be made, that, that they make, they make sense, they pass the smell test. So yeah, I think that's, that'd probably be the top three. Did I answer the whole question? Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
All right, the third question is, what do you see as the opportunities and challenges for this district going forward?
Well, I would assume probably a, a principal challenge in a community like this is that it's a, a growing community. So as you get additional children coming into the school system, you're, you're always going to be stretching the, the existing facilities. You're going to be stretching the, the staff that's available to support them. And so how do you, how do you grow gracefully with, with the influx of, of students and, and make sure that they're, they're not being put into, say, overcrowded classrooms or your student-teacher ratios are, are off? So that, that would be a, a careful balance of, of all the factors to, to make sure you're managing that, that growth appropriately, making the investments for the long term. Because, you know, you have to pay attention to what, what growth to expect years in advance so that the things you're doing now are, are put in the right places so that it doesn't blow up on, on somebody in the, in the future. In terms of opportunities, I mean, it's a, a great school district when you look at the, the, the cultural diversity and, and just the, the family orientation, the people that are here. So I think in terms of the, the, the children that, that you have to work with, it's, it's fantastic. And maybe, maybe we're not the richest school district, but certainly, you know, I, I would consider it a reasonably well-funded school district. So I, I think you have all the, all the materials to, to be producing, you know, fantastic students. I think that's really the principal opportunity.
Great, thank you. That concludes our three questions. We appreciate you being here.
All right, thank you.
Hello.
Hello. Next up, we have Darlene Hinder.
Should I say Hyner?
Yes, please.
I don't know why they put the N in.
Oh, Hiner.
We do that all the time.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you. Good evening, welcome. Okay, I want to let you know, we have hard copies of the questions right in front of you for reference, but we'll be asking them as well.
Sounds good.
Okay, and we'll start off with our new one.
Thank you. Good evening. Hi. Please begin by sharing why you are interested in serving as a member of the PCCS Board of Education and how you are qualified. Part two of that is, in your response, please include how your involvement in the school community has impacted the school district by identifying a time when you worked on a committee, project, or initiative that benefited the district as a whole, not an individual classroom or school.
All right, so first of all, thank you for giving me this opportunity. If I don't win tonight, that was a great group of people. I'm, they're awesome. Really, and this is why I love Piceup. It's diverse. I absolutely love it. I heard so many stories. It's great. So I'll get to why I'm interested. I'm going to be honest with you. I've been a stay-at-home mom for almost 18 years. I got my oldest right here, Ali. I have six kids, senior, sophomore, freshman, fifth grader, and preschool kid, in Kitty Campus and a two-year-old. I have been through every possible kind of school system you can imagine. I've tried Montessori, I've tried private. And eight or nine years ago, we had an opportunity to move anywhere we wanted to and we chose from Mid-Canton. And I don't have any regrets. And the reason I'm interested in this position is I want to give back. I have had so much passion inside of me for the past 18 years with my Masters of Education from U of M, but most of my qualifications from being a mom and being involved. I know that it says, not in individual classrooms, it's kind of hard because I haven't had the time to be part of committees or projects, but I feel that being a parent who supports other parents in schools, whether it's elementary level or middle school or high school, just getting the parents together to advocate for each other has helped these committees, you know, in an indirect way, has helped, you know, bonds pass. You know, we used to get together and figure out ways and I was always the one to start, you know, the conversation and just, just I had that passion in me to want to advocate more for than just the kids, you know, for the students. So I feel my involvement will bring a passion to you and to this district that I don't think you will find anywhere else because the passion in me to help comes to want to reach all voices. I feel that, you know, everybody from the student to the teacher, to the parent, to the janitor, to everybody. I feel like it's one big, it takes a village. So I feel that I can impact just about anybody on any level to be positive and to give their best effort to make whatever project it is possible to the best of its ability. Yep.
Discuss what you see as the three most important responsibilities of the school board and your perspective on the role of a school board member.
So, okay, the three most important responsibilities of the school board. I think, not in any particular order, but I think the most important is to provide a safe environment for our students, obviously. The second most important responsibility for the school board is to make sure there's effective communication and collaboration with the community, right? Because with communication and effective collaboration, there's going to be hopefully success on anything that is, we're trying to reach to be done. And I think a third responsibility, it's kind of hard just to think of three, but I think a third responsibility, important responsibility would probably be, you know, making sure that the school board is, you know, coming to a very, you know, respecting each other's opinions, respecting each other's views, but still coming to one consensus and coming to, you know, clear agreements with each other. Although there may be times where there's a lot of, you know, disagreements, it's important to come to respect each other's opinions and have an open mind and, you know, put our, put each other in, you know, other person's shoes and say, you know, this is what they may be thinking. I may disagree, but at the end of the day, we're trying to benefit the, the betterment of the district, the students, and at the end of the day, the education of our, of our students at Piceup. and at the end of the day, the education of our students at PSEP, at PCCS. One more, sorry. Your perspective on the role of a school board member. I'll be honest with you. I don't know much about the role of a school board member. I'm being very honest. But I do see, and I have watched so many board meetings during COVID because I had nothing to do. And I was like, I'm going to get to know my school board a little bit. I'm like, you know, these people are the ones that are, when my kids go to school, and we've been in the district almost a decade, I have not had one issue that has ever gone unresolved. And it starts, you know, like I said, it takes a village. It starts on the top and the total, and it works its way down. So I feel that my perspective on the role of a school board member is they are here to serve their community. And they're here to make sure that all the, you know, the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. So that's my perspective.
Excellent. So the last question is, what do you see as you see as the opportunities and challenges for the district going forward? And please be specific.
Okay, I always like to start with the positive. So the opportunities I see for this district are endless. You have no idea in the past nine years how diverse this community has gotten. I mean, you have opportunities to reach the high school with the endless amount of programs they have that are offered to so many kids, to the middle school, to the elementary, to even the, I am learning so much about the preschool program right now. It's phenomenal. And these teachers that are there are like so qualified. I'm like, wow, where was this 16 years ago? So I think the opportunities for the district are endless in the aspect of the amount of diversity that can be implemented in every single level, from high school to middle to elementary to preschool. And this is, by the way, my first preschool. I have six kids that I do public school. And I wish I would have done it a long time ago. Challenges, I'm going to be honest with you, not because you all are sitting here, but I don't, the challenges are more, I think, on a level of within administration where it's between teachers and administrators. And I feel there could be a lot more focus on ways parents can be involved. Because realistically speaking, we're living in a generation, we're busy, we're working, we're trying to make ends meet, we're trying to put food on the table. So I feel maybe more parent involvement within the schools is probably something I would love to implement or have, you know, the district be more focused their attention more on that. Because I feel that in the past, so many of us parents that can't get involved talk after school. And we have so many of these great ideas. And the beautiful thing about being with these parents right now is we made each other feel normal. And it was just an hour of, you know, talking and, you know, let's start some conversations. So it was pretty fun. And I feel that who we are here and even just that little room really defines what you guys are all about. So that's it.
Great, thank you very much. That concludes our three questions.
Awesome. Thank you guys very much.
We appreciate you joining us this evening. Okay, we have Gabriel Jim. Welcome. How are you?
Nervous.
We're glad you're here. Gabriel, we have a hard copy of the questions we're going to ask you, just for your own reference, right in front of you. But we will also ask them kind of round robin here. And I'll start off with the first question if you're ready.
Okay.
Okay, so please begin by sharing why you are interested in serving as a member of the PCCS Board of Education and how you are qualified. And within your response, please also include how your involvement in the school community has impacted the school district by identifying a specific time when you worked on a committee or project or initiative that benefited the district as a whole and not necessarily a single classroom or a school building.
Okay. So my motivation is I see volunteering as a way of giving thanks to my neighbors and the educators who invest their time and talents to help others become a success. And so serving on the school board member, as a school board member, you know, there's some things that I'd really like to see more and more students and their families become engaged in. Because there's a lot of great extracurricular activities that are afforded by Plymouth Canton School Systems and PSEP. So I'd like to be a part of, you know, making that connection between families and other opportunities. With regards to my service, let me go to my qualifications. So my qualifications are, I'm an Navajo, grew up in Oklahoma off the reservation, and was a product of public education, small town Oklahoma. I had plenty of adults and other educators who spent time investing in me and encouraging me and challenging me. And as a result, after graduation, I actually grew up next to a big Ohio State Buckeye fan. He was big in the Woody Hayes and Boishen Beckler. That's how I got to know Michigan. And that's, he was part of the reasons why I ended up coming to University of Michigan after graduation, just because I had that familiarity, thanks to, you know, some caring adults in my life. And went on to get my master's degree at Stanford. And in terms of other qualifications, you know, I've used my time to try to tutor. I've tutored Detroit Public School middle school students. And I found that to be a hard but enjoyable activity, seeing them and trying to challenge them to learn. In my work, I'm a technical specialist, so I have to guide and teach other people, not only engineers, but technicians and many other people. And, you know, I enjoy that role. Been recently reassigned as a supervisor. So now I have not only the privilege of guiding and teaching, but also finding ways to nurture and set great expectations for people. So I'm learning how to do that. And I think some of those skills would be applicable as a school board member in terms of reaching out to educators, staff, the students, and the families. In terms of my involvement in Plymouth Canton, you're looking at somebody who chaperoned for the high school band. And I was also involved in the crew, building, designing props for the band directors. And seeing the joy of the students and the other families when they saw the props was something amazing. By the way, I was part of the crew that built that time machine, DeLorean, in 2022. Also continued to serve also for winter percussion and helping out wherever I can. And even today, you know, I try to still stay involved with adults, especially with special needs because I have a child who's in the, actually two children, in the cognitive impairment program, sophomore at Salem High, and another one who goes to Livonia Franklin. And so, you know, when help is needed, whether it's code check-in or whatever they need, you know, I usually do my best to try to volunteer and help out, not only be a part of the kids' activities, but also just to get to know other students. So that's my involvement. Was there another question?
Yes, our next question is, discuss what you see as the three most important responsibilities of the school board and your perspective on the role of a school board member.
So number one is something that we all love, budget. You know, budget's really critical. Got to be able to pay the teachers, pay for the facilities. Make sure that we're spending the taxpayers' monies wisely. So that's probably the number one. The number two is just making sure that the curriculum continues to encourage our students and staff to turn out, you know, highly educated kids, whether they go into college or they go into a location, that they are prepared to meet those challenges. And then I think the number three is, from what I've seen, schools can be a great place to, you know, build community between families. I've seen plenty of families who got to know one another when their kids were in elementary school, middle school, just seeing those ties. And so, you know, schools still play an important role in that part of the social fabric. So that, those are the three things I see for the schools. The responsibility of a school board member, attending meetings and making sure that the policies, the goals and objectives that are set, that they just support these three important things that, you know, discussions are made. I also think that another important thing for the school board members is to really listen to the families, not only the students, but the families. As I've attended a few of these meetings, you know, I can relate to some of these parents' concerns. And, you know, as a school board member, it's very important to, you know, hear them and to thoughtfully see what's our response going to be. Is there a reason to act and give them feedback? If there's a reason to wait or not act, you know, as a courtesy, reach out to them and let them know. So.
Thank you.
That it?
One more question.
One more question, yep. What do you see as the opportunities and challenges for this district going forward?
An opportunity is, I think, looking more at preparing our students to really meet employment demands, not only if they go to college, but, you know, some are not going to go to college. And PSEP's got a lot of resources around it, Wayne County Community, Schoolcraft. Just a lot of really good two-year vocational type education. And I think PSEP really ought to tap into those resources more aggressively and find ways how to partner with some of these other institutions to prepare our students for vocational work, including kids involved in goals and the CI Special Needs Educational Programs. And then the other one's a problem?
Oh, just know what you see as opportunities and challenges for the district going forward.
So, yeah, the opportunities and challenges I see is one and the same. Just, you know, getting our kids equipped to, you know, be prepared to go out into the real world is, you know, because at some point, many of them are going to have to work nine to five or midnight to 7:00 a.m. jobs. And, you know, the more we can make them better equipped to meet those challenges, you know, I think that will reflect well on PSEP, the educators, and the staff. So.
Great, thank you very much. That concludes our three questions. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Good evening, Christine. Servo, is that how you say your last name?
Yes.
Okay, great. Have a seat. Welcome. Okay, we have a hard copy of the questions we're going to ask you in front of you for reference, but we'll kind of go around the table and ask them as well, if you're ready for us.
I'm going to read the first question, if you're ready.
Sure.
Okay. Please begin by sharing why you are interested in serving as a member of the PCCS Board of Education and how you are qualified. And in that response, please include how your involvement in the school community has impacted the school district by identifying a time when you worked on a committee, project, or initiative that benefited the district as a whole, not an individual classroom or school.
Okay, so it sounds like there's three parts to that question. Why I would like to serve on the board is to help my community and the district. I read the dynamic plan, and I fully support the strategic goals that have been outlined in that. And I think that our community, by being on an online platform where parents have shared their topics of interest related to the school, that parents would like to be more engaged, and I would like to help facilitate that. As far as my qualifications, I'll tell you a little bit about myself first. I am a longtime Canton community member. I was a former PCCS student myself and am a PCCS parent. My bachelor's degree is in English, and I did some teaching in that area, English as a second language. Excuse me, I'm a little bit nervous here. And I completed the secondary education coursework there at Eastern. I have a master's in research administration and a year of law school from Purdue. And, I'm sorry, could you please restate the third part?
Yes, absolutely, yes. So in the response, please include your involvement in the school community and how it's impacted the school district by identifying a time when you worked on a committee, project, or initiative that benefited the district as a whole.
I have done some volunteer work with the Canton community in planning and coordinating events when the Village Arts Factory was opened, as well as their Veterans Dormitory and Memorial Garden. I volunteered at the school, doing some fundraising as a chaperone and volunteer reader. I've also done some volunteer work regionally in regulatory affairs and in other areas.
Discuss what you see as the three most important responsibilities of the school board and your perspective on the role of the school board member.
So I think one of the most important things as a school board member is to carry out the responsibilities required of the role and to carry them out in ethical manner, and also to serve the community members. And as well, of course, the children and as the decisions that the board makes affects their lives and the future generations and the legacy of the district. Thank you.
Oh, it is me, I'm sorry. Sorry, I got confused. The last question that we have is, what do you see as the opportunities and challenges for this district going forward? And please be specific.
Sure. Well, I did look a little bit at the data from the previous years, and I do see that there are some achievement gaps and some disparities in some areas. Again, those are outlined in the dynamic plan. However, you know, does the board have a clear vision on how to achieve those goals? And I think that that is one of the biggest challenges, is that we know where we want to go, but how do we get there?
Thank you very much. That concludes our question.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate your time for being here. Okay, at this point, we have interviewed all nine candidates. We have our score sheet here, so we can take a few minutes to tally up our score. And then when we are ready, we can hand that over to Mr. Squid, if he's ready for us.
Pardon?
That's mine.
It's that mine.
I'm trying to move it out of the way, and it makes a weird noise.
Yes. And as a reminder, I want us to look at the point system. So your first choice is three points, your second choice is two points, and your third choice is one point, just for clarity, so you don't impose that.
Thank you for reminding us.
Yes, of course.
I guess, yeah. Any other clarifying question? Let me get up here. So I place the points by the candidates, my top three candidates. And I want to make sure that everybody's doing the same for...
In your column.
In my column. So it's not first, second, third place, it's three points, two points, and one point.
Correct. We're not writing...
Yeah, so that could confuse things. So please write your points.
Points, not the choice.
So three points for your first choice, two points for your second choice, and one point for your third choice.
Thank you for that clarification.
When they get added up.
Correct, so we just want to make sure that to avoid a mathematical error.
Yeah. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
I mean, that's...
Yeah.
This time we need that big flush.
Points. Points.
Got the public with it too.
Did you go to the... Did you go to the...
No. Did you?
Yeah. Can you explain the point again?
Sure, so our voting system is for your first, first-choice candidate gets three points.
Got it.
Your second-place candidate receives two points in your column, and then your third-place candidate has one point. And then please submit to Mr. Tiskwitz when you're finished.
I had to go back and look at the materials, there's some great candidates.
I know, lots of good stuff. I covered my sentence, it says, please be specific.
But, I know, but it's hard.
No, it's very hard, there's some great candidates.
Good candidates, I know. It must be stressful. I mean, committee interviews are always hard to...
It is, it is definitely stressful, speaking from experience.
Committee interviews with an audience.
That's right.
Okay.
Oh, is it really?
First day of October. So people are stronger.
On this sheet, there's four lines, but we're only giving three candidates, and there's only an option for one point, two points?
Yeah, I'll explain that in a moment.
I'm sorry?
She'll explain in a minute.
Okay. I'm jumping ahead of myself, okay.
I don't like to think ahead. Enough trouble figuring out the first one. I'm going to scroll out the count day. Have a lot of issues with that. Make sure everybody's there. All the time, all day. They should be well-rested, well-stimed.
Yeah, but... I can tell you there's an opportunity to immediately, if someone's not sick or whatever.
Yeah, you have like Sunday, Sundays? Yeah, you have some time now. Like, you don't send, you don't send a seriously child. But, like, that's not the day to plan a dentist appointment. It's just easier, it's easier if they show up.
Okay, can we bring all the candidates back in? Is Carly on her way? Yeah, please. Oh, maybe.
They could have just gotten up, because... He's going to bathroom.
Thank you, absolutely.
So there wasn't a tie?
Okay, looks like everyone's here. Great, thank you, everybody who came and stated their case for the open board seat. I do want to announce that we have defined the three candidates that are going to move on to the second round. So if you hear your name, please stay. So we have Amina Ahmed. We have Rockland Johnson, Rocky Hashem Assyrian. Okay. For everyone else, I want to thank you very much for your consideration for this position, and please, we invite you to stay engaged with the district and participate in any committees or additional opportunities to support our district. So we really appreciate your time here, so thank you.
I just would mention, there's some fantastic candidates here, and this was not an easy decision for all of us. So I wanted to thank everybody for putting in the effort and coming out and talking. And as President Christensen said, please, there's many subcommittees and boards, and we welcome people to continue to stay engaged and be part of that process.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're also, you're also, for those of you that were... This is a public meeting, so you're also welcome to stay if you were not selected to see what the process is and see what, how the rest of this goes.
Great. Are we asking candidates to then go back into the room?
Yeah.
Okay.
Some order?
Can you say my name again?
Because I think he was going to do it in the same order as that it was already written.
In the order that's on this list? Okay, so we are going to...
In the order...
The order that they were in the original.
On the original sheet.
We don't have the original.
I do.
You do, okay, you've got the original.
So we will, we will maintain, I see, I get it, sorry. Bear with us, everyone. So Hashem, you will be our first interviewee. And then Rocky, you will be next, and Amina, you will follow. So I, if both Amina and Rocky could step back into the collaboration space, and we will invite Hashem up to the board table. Okay, so we have a series of questions here, it's more than three. Again, we have a printed copy there for you for reference. But I do, just in the essence of time too, we want to limit our responses to questions to about a couple minutes. And we will go around the table and start to ask our questions. And I will start off with the first one, if you're ready for us.
Yes.
Okay. Serving on the school board is a very reward, is very rewarding, but it can require a lot of time. In addition to preparation and attendance at regular meetings, there are special meetings, committee meetings, trainings, community, and district events. How would you meet this time commitment?
Well, I'm currently a staff member for the City of Detroit Workforce Board. I'm familiar with the process. Preparation is key, understanding the agenda items for discussion, also engaging right stakeholders, communicating right information, and sending out the product and the right information and goals and objectives for each meeting or discussion.
Okay, thank you. Can you move the mic a little bit closer to your, to you two? Onto the next question? All right, the second question is, describe your view of the role of the superintendent. What is, this is, this mic is odd. What is the ideal relationship between the school board members and the superintendent? Please be specific.
The ideal relationship should be collaborative. It should be in the best interest of students. It should always be evidence-based. Any decision-making should be based on data and analytics. I'm a big fan of key decision-making based on data and informed decision-making. It's very important when, especially for the well-being of students. When you have the right of data, you can drive decision-making, especially at the public level. The relationship should also be based on trust and the ability to actively engage and build that trust in order to better the outcomes for our students.
Thank you. All right, question number three is, the school board works to build consensus around decisions, and all members are expected to publicly and privately support decisions made by the body. How would you work to implement a decision you don't agree with?
Any decision that should be put forth should always be based on facts, and it should also be evidence-based. And it should also be valued in the context of what's most important for our students. And if I don't agree with a decision, I would have to resort to, you know, identifying what the opportunity is and what the item of discussion can, and just do further research. And, you know, data should always be the driving factor in any of my decision-making and applying those models, you know, in an algorithmic way in order to identify the best outcome for any decision made.
Okay, I've got the next question for you. How do you work with people that you don't agree with? Give a specific example from your professional life.
Example from my, people, you know, with, how do you work? Working with people, you know, is, you know, it requires relationship building. It also requires trust, and it also requires facts. Sticking to the fact and the outcome of any, and the goal and objective of any intended outcome. We should keep in, that's not, that's the framework of my guiding decision. It's always informed, based on best practices. It's also based on evidence in the field. And it's also, any, it should also be informed. Keeping in mind the best solution for intended outcomes for the, any decision made. I work well with people. My background's in social work, I'm able to identify interpersonal practice methods and methodologies and implement them in any situation. Identifying key issues for contention and always resorting to removing my biases and sticking to the best intended solution for that outcome.
Question, question four. I'm sorry, question five. How, when there are difficult decisions to make, such as allocating funding or redistricting, how will you make a decision in the best interest of the entire school community, regardless of the impact on your own family or school your children attend?
It's always based on opportunity versus cost. And, you know, any decision made should be resorting to the fact of leveraging the best resources for the most appropriate intended outcome. Bearing in mind that it's always about cost opportunities. And my strength is, is in identifying synergies and opportunities for improvement. This is where I would bring into the table. And how can we reduce costs, identify elements for rework, or identify eliminating, limiting any financial decisions in order to support the, you know, the intended outcomes for the, for our, for our community.
So the school board has equity as an ongoing goal, as referenced in our dynamic plan. Please explain how you would help move our district forward in creating an inclusive, welcoming and safe environment for all students.
In my role, I'm currently charged with the, the, DEI initiatives, diversity, equity, inclusion initiatives, in order to bridge the gap for marginalized populations entering into workforce, especially when it comes to new immigrants and people of color. We start with identifying a comprehensive strategy for any DEI initiative, ensuring that people have the right, are empowered to make, to be in the positions that are relevant to their goals and objectives and their career paths and guidelines, so that they are an integrated member of our society.
All right, sorry, it's on to me. I wasn't paying attention to my order. Okay, number seven, please share your thoughts about the district's dynamic plan. What do you like, what is working, and what would you change?
I am not privy for, for the dynamic plan, I've not reviewed it. But I can say that from a, you know, statewide initiatives that I've worked on, especially within the city of Detroit and, and the opportunities in skill gap, and opportunities in educational attainment, and ensuring a workflow, a smooth transition. And also, it was very alarming that I read in, and he found out that there's a huge gap in reading levels, which is something that I'm passionate about, especially for my kids being that age. And how do we respond to that initiative, especially as an impact in the long run?
All right, question eight. In the first round, we asked about opportunities and challenges for the district moving forward. Based upon your response, please share suggestions for possible solutions.
I think this would be where my strength is, identifying funding opportunities. Because I come across, you know, a lot of grant opportunities and funding options through the state, federal, for, that we can potentially tap into. I'm a resourceful grant writer, have great, good writing skills, able to identify a business case and, and based on a specific instance, and make a case for funding for those opportunities. This is, this would be definitely my strong suit, bringing into the board, especially as a right to tapping into other funding opportunities, whether private or federal.
Thank you.
In an era of limited financial resources, how would you enlist support for bond proposals or facility, for facilities, enhancement millages and sinking funds for ongoing maintenance issues from citizens reluctant to increase taxes or those without children in the public schools?
Tapping into the community engagement and, and, you know, and the resources of parents. And also addressing, like I mentioned earlier, funding opportunities through philanthropic organizations. There are many in Michigan, and also state and federal ones. But also getting the parents involved and making, and integrating community with any efforts for funding opportunities.
I've got the last question for you. So this ends the questions. Is there anything else you would like to share with the board about your interest in this position?
I'm primarily interested in this position because I value diversity. And I also would like to tap into my skills and resources and connections with the state and federal local, also with philanthropic organizations. I would be able, I'd definitely be an asset. I'm able to communicate well with, you know, different members of the board and develop plans and models for educational resources and things for our students.
Great, thank you very much. That concludes our questioning. Welcome back, Rocky Johnson. Okay, we have a series of questions for you. Again, they are printed in front of you for reference. Here, we're going to limit our responses to about one to two minutes per question, if you're ready for us to begin. Good to go?
Ready.
Great. All right, so I will kick us off. Serving on the school board is very rewarding, but it can require a lot of time. In addition to preparation and attendance at regular meetings, there are special meetings, committee meetings, trainings, and community and district events. How would you meet this time commitment?
It's a very good question. I think that most of my service career, spanning over the last fifteen to twenty years, has always been the jobs that someone didn't want, or they were too busy to do. I am a business owner. I do have employees that can handle my business at any moment that I need to step away. Current commitments for me, both professionally and of service. Typical day, I change my routine, I would be able to go to the office. I got my first email from the board this morning at six forty-five, I was already there at work. Thursdays and Fridays, I typically leave at two o'clock already to make football, travel wherever the team may need us. You find time to do those things that are important to you. And when something as important as education of our children is at stake, I will find the time to make every appointment possible.
Describe your role, your view of the role of the superintendent. What is the ideal relationship between board members, school board members, and the superintendent? Please be specific.
The role of the superintendent is the CEO and head and spokesperson for our district. The role of the board and the ideal relationship between those two is one of unity. One that speaks as one voice. We might have differences in an office where we're having a meeting at, but when we come here to this table in front of our community, we are one voice. So the relationship is one of this giving as well. So if we have a difference of opinion, there's always give and takes. There's compromise, there's passion. I like the word robust. Last week, we used that word a lot here, robust discussion. In my words, that's probably a little heated conversation, which is welcome in a board meeting, because if we always agree together, one of us ain't doing our job. That's my opinion. But if we have an ideal situation where superintendent and board meet, have conversation, and the direction is clear, that is the best type of relationship.
All right, the third question. The school board works to build consensus around decisions, and all members are expected to publicly and privately support decisions made by the body. How would you work to implement a decision you don't agree with?
I feel my last answer spoke to a little bit of that, and I didn't even have time to read the other questions yet. But I think that when we have the robust discussions, and we, we make the plan of attack of what we're going to be doing, or whatever task that we're doing, we agree as a unit, as a team, as a group of people working for the same thing. I have a support system, my wife. She's my number one supporter in my life. She probably hears more things about my life, my work, my things, than she probably wants to. But in no way, situation is a professional person allowed to go outside of the realm. Like, things that are said in the meeting stays in the meeting. Things that are, might not be a popular decision, but it didn't go the way that you thought it should for the group, you need to make sure that you button it up and you portray the atmosphere of what you want and the culture that you want. I don't think that this is going to be a problem for me in any way.
I have the next question for you. How do you work with people that you don't agree with? Give a specific example from your professional life.
In a public forum, it's going to be kind of weird for me to say this, but I'll just say it anyway. When I have a disagreement or someone that I truly don't like, which is few and far between, I always look for the commonality of each other. In my professional life, I spend more time with my in-laws than any one man alive. Rick, the Rick of Rick and Rockies, is my father-in-law. There is plenty of times that we do not agree upon things. But we look at each other and say for the common of our business, because the business is larger than us. With us or without us, the business must succeed. So we will make the best decision that we can, and we'll move on. After seventy hours and six days, do I want to have dinner at his house on Sunday? Probably not. But I still go, because my family wants to be there as part of the family. Those are exactly the type of relationships that I talk about with this board, and I think that I'd be able to bring that here as well.
When there are difficult decisions to make, such as allocating funding or redistricting, how will you make a decision in the best interest of the entire school community, regardless of the impact on your own family or school your children attend?
That is a very good question as well. When big projects of a district comes up, there is piles of work that needs to be done. There are many experts, there are people to consult, there are outside agencies sometimes. There are leadership in this room, in this community, that have gone through reorganizations, has gone through redistricting, has gone through budget cuts. I would seek their input and find out how they worked best, what decisions did they come across, ask them what was able to be done, what compromises had to be made, what damages and what effects were for the good and bad, and then make the proper decision with the group that I've given to make that decision with.
The district, I'm sorry, the school board has equity as an ongoing goal, as referenced in our dynamic plan. Please explain how you would help move our district forward in creating an inclusive, welcoming and safe learning environment for all students.
This goes back to the first round of questioning in my book. This comes back from a culture. The culture of our district will always need to be diverse. The equity of each student deserves the absolute best that this board and this district can provide, no matter of race, creed, sect, doesn't matter. They're a person, and they're a student, they deserve our best. Being able to engage each one of those children for what they are and who they are personally, is the best way that I could think of it. Showing that you care by showing up, doing the job, not looking for thanks or notoriety, just doing what's best for the student. By doing that, I think that everyone has an equitable position and a way to learn and thrive in our community.
Okay, question number seven. Please share your thoughts about the district's dynamic plan. What do you like, what is working, what would you change?
Over the past few days, and actually, I probably saw the dynamic plan for the first time, maybe about a year ago. But because I knew the dynamic plan was going to be part of this conversation, of course, I printed it off and put it in my folder over here. Some of the things that I think that we could work on is driving partnerships with the communities in which we serve. Last Tuesday, we talked about an opportunity potentially of Plymouth putting in a turf field at East Middle School. That partnership by itself could do a lot of things for us. There is community that, which is great, Plymouth could use it for their activities, we could use it for middle school athletics. We could use it as an opportunity for middle school band to have a place to practice. We, as a community, could reach out to other partners in our community, such as small businesses like myself, larger corporation, Bosch, Appso Pure. There's plenty of them, which we already do. But we need to continue the strength of the community and getting the partnership. So I think that that's where I would play a lot of potential gains in the dynamic plan is partnerships with our community.
Question eight. In the first round, we asked about opportunities and challenges for the district moving forward. Based upon your response, please share suggestions for possible solutions.
In the waiting room, we were having the same conversation. I think that we were sharing ideas between each other, which is a beautiful thing. In the first round, I talked about the culture of our community and our schools. The first thing that I would do is fix the facilities for what they are. When we have an inviting, clean, pristine campus at all schools, not only just the high schools, but all schools, it changes the demeanor and the culture in which we live. When we have a culture that kids will walk past trash that is laying on the ground, and without asking, pick it up and throw it away because our buildings are pristine, that's when you will know that your culture has changed. I think that the culture also can change when people understand that our school district is behind our students a hundred percent, and we're willing to do whatever it takes to make our buildings and our facilities look like we are behind them a hundred percent. We will end up keeping and retaining and gaining students that would otherwise leave our district. Curb appeal has a lot to do with the culture of our place, and that's what I would work on.
I have the last question for you.
Oh, I have number nine?
No.
We're on nine.
That's okay.
Oh, we're on nine, I'm sorry.
Yep. In an era of limited financial resources, how would you enlist support for bond proposals for facilities, enhancement millages, and sinking funds for ongoing maintenance issues from citizens reluctant to increase taxes or those without children in the public schools?
Another great question. So when we passed our last bond, I think it was somewhere north of two hundred twenty-five million, something like that, two hundred fifty million, something like that, that is a lot of money. We were two decades behind in asking for that money. We have school districts in our immediate area that are getting a billion with a B, a billion to spend on their schools. And we're scrapping by by getting this. Things are going to have to be looked at in a proactive way of saying that we deserve better. Though they might not have children in the Though they might not have children in the district, a school district is a number one reason or one of the top reasons for a family to move into the area. Property values are debated upon it. Decisions will need to be made on priority of programming. With education taking first over athletics, education should take first priority on everything that we do. Now, with that being said, athletics is another major place where money is being spent. Maybe spent correctly, maybe not. But if we're working to get that done, we also need to look at the things where the state law prohibits us from passing different millages. What are we doing to lobby for that? If we look at the district's lobbying expenses, it shows none has been spent. At least that's what it says on the webpage right now. I think that we should be working with other schools in the Wayne County and passing other millages or even local millages to make it work. If there's a will, there's a way, and there's also that community support from local businesses that we should be able to tap into and refine the resources need.
Now, this is the last question. This answer questions for you. Is there anything else you would like to share with the board about your interest in this position?
I think the board, by now, from the months of me being here, I've interacted with the board a number of times. And to be honest with you, I think this is the calmest I've ever been talking to you guys because I normally just get really passionate and really worked up quickly. To say that I'm passionate about the opportunity of sitting on this board doesn't even come close to understanding my desire to be on this board. And I would be remiss if I didn't ask you to place me on this board. I want to be here. And I've also challenged this board to understand that I may not have views like you do, some of them. I may not be affiliated with a political party, same as you, different, whatever. I may come from a background that's different than yours. So what, take a chance with me. Just remember that if nothing changes, nothing changes. So take a chance on someone that might have a different opinion than yours, I think you'll be pleasantly surprised. That's it.
Thank you very much. That concludes our round of questioning. Appreciate you being here. Welcome back, Amina Ahmed. Second round. So just as before, we have the round two questions printed out in front of you for reference if you want to take a look at those. But we'll just go around the table and ask our questions. We're trying to limit the responses to questions about one to two minutes because we have a few more than the first round.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right. So I will start with question number one. Serving on the school board is very rewarding, but it can require a lot of time. In addition to preparation and attendance at regular meetings, there are special meetings, committee meetings, trainings, and community and district events. How would you meet this time commitment?
Thank you. Simply by prioritizing the commitment. I don't believe, I wouldn't even have applied if I didn't think that it was possible for me to carve the time. And I'm not going to lie, I am a member of the sandwich generation. After this finishes, I have to go to the hospital because my mom's in the hospital and the kids are still at home. So like, there's no denying that everyone has a lot on their plate because I'm sure all of you do, but it's a matter of prioritization. And like I said, I wouldn't have applied if I didn't think that I could carve out the time to be a committed and dedicated and present board member.
The second question. Describe your view of the role of the superintendent. What is the ideal relationship between school board members and the superintendent? Please be specific.
It's definitely not, well, I guess you're not supposed to start with a negative, but I am. It should not be adversarial and it should not be combative because when it is, it's the students who suffer ultimately. And I do believe that the relationship between the board and the superintendent should be one of a deep partnership where they align on expectations, they align on vision, they align on goals, and it should be one of transparent communication where if the superintendent is facing a challenge, they're able to come to the board for support or help or anything that they may need. And at the same time, the board should be able to ensure that the superintendent is supported in ways that leads to the, what do you call it? Implementation of the vision for the district. Thank you. Oh, sorry, one more. I guess I skipped the first part of it. May I just quickly say that? That I believe the role of the superintendent is to ensure that every student in the district is educated in the way that is best and to manage like the running of the district. Thank you.
The third question is, the school board works to build consensus around decisions and all members are expected to publicly and privately support decisions made by the body. How would you work to implement a decision you don't agree with?
So I find myself often on the margins and I'm often in rooms where I am the only of a certain perspective, whatever that perspective might be. And so, but as part of a team, I pride myself on always going with whatever the team has ultimately decided. And I may be very vocal during the decision-making process, I may be very vocal presenting my point of view, but I never undermine the team. And I would be fully committed to publicly and privately supporting decisions made by the body. That's not to say that I wouldn't negotiate behind the scenes or that I wouldn't try to persuade behind the scenes. But once a decision was made, I would not undermine any team or any body that I'm part of by going out on a limb or publicly shaming or discounting or anything like that.
Next question. How do you work with people that you don't agree with? Give a specific example from your professional life.
How do I work with people I don't agree with? I hope it's still cordial. I will not lie and say that it is without discomfort because I believe that like discomfort can actually lead to growth. So I'm often not afraid to be the disruptor, and that can be uncomfortable for people. And it's not with an intention of, oh, let me just disrupt for the sake of disrupting. It's when I have a particular, when I have something to contribute. It's not just to be like, oh, let me just flip the table over because I want to flip the table over. And I'm being dramatic, I don't mean that. I mean lifting a point of view that I feel like, sometimes I feel that confirmation bias or kind of a yes-man tendency moves into groups. And I might be the one sitting there not having that point of view and I'm not shy about asserting it. And a specific example from my professional life would be, I used to run an organization whose goal was to empower a certain ethnic group. And right in the beginning, someone very prominent, I won't, I know you asked me to be specific, but I'm going to be a little bit vague because I don't want it like traced back to names. Someone actually called me out and said, you shouldn't be here, you should be working for a different organization. Because they didn't view my identity as being congruent with what they thought the identity of people the org was serving was. And so we had a long conversation, we did not end up agreeing. I continued to serve. And at a certain point, I decided that actually the misalignment was too much to keep working through. And so at that point, we parted ways. But till then, I did my best and I worked, I continued to work with the individual, even though I knew that we were, like, that was a significant misalignment, at least for me.
When there are difficult decisions to make such as allocating funding or redistricting, how will you make a decision in the best interest of the entire school community, regardless of the impact on your own family or school your children attend?
Probably by being a very active listener and really paying attention to what the community wants, what stakeholders think would benefit the community, and what is in the best interest of the community. I think it would be, I would be lying if I, you know, my primary identity is usually, I say, I'm just a mom. So I would be lying if I didn't say that, of course, like my kids come first. But when I'm in a decision-making situation and when I'm taking on a responsibility to represent a collective, then if anything, I almost err on the opposite side because I'm so afraid of biasing the situation. So I try really hard to not let that bias my judgment and decision-making. And I think the best way to do that is by making sure I'm very well-informed and connected with other perspectives as well as the data.
The school board has equity as an ongoing goal as referenced in our dynamic plan. Please explain how you would help move our district forward in creating an inclusive, welcoming, and safe learning environment for all students.
So I think the cornerstone of my life really has been, even beyond equity, it's belonging. So I fundamentally believe in a society, in a community, in schools where every student feels that they belong. And to me, that's even deeper than equity. Things that I would do would be to continue some of the initiatives that I know like have taken place and then in some cases been discontinued. But I think student and parent voice would be very important in this. I think looking at the data, as I know, like the SPA committee looks at it right now, but even deeper, I know when I was part of the district improvement stakeholder group, I'm sorry, I'm bad with like long names, but that was one of the things we were doing. And we were looking at it across, not just, you know, like race or ethnicity. We were looking at like cross-cutting the data in many different ways and saying, where are we not having equitable outcomes? And where do we find these gaps and what can we do to fill them? And, you know, sometimes some stuff works, something doesn't. But I would always be willing to invest in that and to do the hard work necessary for it because it, like I said, that's like a cornerstone value for me. And I guess one more thing I should mention is that I serve on the policy committee, I have for a number of years. And on the journey to equity, one of the things that I think is really important is asking questions that others might not ask. So I, for instance, found out through a question I asked during the policy committee when an administrator was at the meeting, that the coaches, not necessarily, like not all the coaches are employed by the district in ways where they would access all the training that the district offers. So that was a learning, I found there was a gap, and then we could address it. So that's like a concrete example of something that I would continue doing.
Onto question number seven. Please share your thoughts about the district's dynamic plan. What do you like? What is working and what would you change?
I really like the district's dynamic plan. I really appreciate the focus on communication and I've seen improvement in that, I've seen streamlining in that. I appreciate the stakeholder engagement and the focus on equity and student success. And I believe we've made good progress in those areas. I do think it's tough to, you know, the district isn't an island. And so for instance, the state of Michigan is one of the worst for student to counselor ratio. And that's not something one district on their own can fix. And I think that affects, you know, that does affect how successfully the dynamic plan can be implemented, for instance. And in terms of what I would change, I don't know that I would change anything in the current plan, which is till 2027. But I do think that I've seen different buildings doing benchmarking and evaluating against it. And I think I would encourage them to continue doing that and also to think about ways where perhaps they could showcase things that they're not able to in the current framework.
Question eight. In the first round, we asked about opportunities and challenges for the district moving forward. Based upon your response, please share suggestions for possible solutions.
You should have told us that before. This is reminding me of a not fun family meeting. No. So I believe I talked about demographics. I don't think we can do anything about the declining birth rate. But I do think that having the school of choice option is a smart move because at least that way, people who want to opt into the district can. And they're allowed into places where there's room, right? So I think that's, that's one thing. In terms of the changing demographics, when I referred to more diverse families moving into the district, I've seen some really positive things in terms of language access really improved. And I think that would be an area that could continue to grow. I think, I really think that, for instance, I don't remember who it was, but there was an effort, at least at some of the levels, to actually, for instance, increase, not increase, examine more closely the books in the classrooms, in the libraries, as well as in the media center to see. And there had actually been, it was really nice because it was an opt-in survey that asked families to, I don't remember the wording, but something about like your favorite book or things like that. And then, you know, those were crowdsourced, in some cases donated, in some cases acquired by the district. And it might seem like a small thing, but I think things like that go a long way for that child to enter the school in elementary and feel a sense of belonging when they can go find that book in their classroom or in the media center. So I think initiatives like that would be great. I believe I alluded to Lansing as a challenge. And I think, not I think, I've appreciated how the board and the district has worked with our state legislators to champion for public education and for the district specifically. So I would say to continue doing that and maintain a good relationship and open communication so that, so that the district knows. And for instance, I'm making this up right now, but if there's an initiative where it's helpful for a student to testify on how a certain amount of funds impacted their education in a positive way, that would be an opportunity to embrace. But we would know about it if we weren't in touch with what was going on. And the other thing is, I think I am, like, I've been watching the district and I've appreciated how we have not ended up in situations like a neighboring district that I will leave unnamed. I appreciate that even when things have been tight, we've been able to keep things as sustainable as possible and that we've kept our promises and that when money has become more available, we've brought back the programs that we might have had to cut or slash and things like that. So I think continuing in that way. And the third challenge was, oh, screens. And I think on that, really just keeping with the times. And I've seen the district evolve. For instance, I'm really thrilled to see the expansion of the academies. I'm really excited about the early college initiative, which I always which I always used to cringe, because I could see kids leaving for those programs in other districts. And, so, I think, you know, I think those are things in the right direction. But, I'm guessing that there will be, need to be more in-depth, like, almost a learning journey, on how do we approach education in a way where we're not shortchanging our students, and, like, not equipping them with technology, but also making sure that the technology is aiding their education versus distracting them, or giving them shorter attention spans, or whatever it might be. I'm sorry, that was definitely more than two minutes. Apologies.
Kind of crosses over to this one a little bit. Okay, so, number nine is, "In an era of limited financial resources, how would you enlist support for bond proposals for facilities, enhancement millages, and sinking funds for ongoing maintenance issues from citizens reluctant to increased taxes, or those without children in the public schools?"
I think it's hard. I think we, in general, we live in interesting times. And, I do think that the pandemic, one would have hoped that something like a pandemic would make a community or society realize how important the collective is. And I'm not sure we quite got there. Like, I think we got there in terms of mutual aid and things like that. The school district providing meals, for instance, was a wonderful demonstration of that. But, I think, otherwise, unfortunately, it feels like we took a little bit of a turn more towards an individualistic, like, only I count, a me-centered sort of situation. And in that, when you advocate for taxes, it gets hard. But, my, my, you know, and I, even though I wasn't a member of the bond committee, I'm not going to, you know, misstate anything, but I was working hard with anybody I knew on a one-on-one basis, trying to get them to vote for the bond, and for the millage increase. And my argument always was that, you know, do you want a good school district, regardless of whether your kids go there? This is the community you live in. Do you want good schools in your neighborhood? And is this where you want to live? Or do you want schools that are constantly having to fight for every penny, and then things get shut down? And, in some cases, you know, maybe this is, maybe this is too much of a nightmare kind of projection. But, I would tell them stories about cities where there's only charter schools left, and the public school system has completely been decimated. And, you know, I would tell them that that's what happens when privileged people can move their kids to other places, and the only people left cannot keep advocating and fighting for survival. So, you know, maybe it doesn't need to be that drastic. But, my, my push, or my pitch, is always the value of public education, and strong schools around us, no matter who you are, whether you have kids in the district or not.
I have the last question for you. This ends our questions for you. Is there anything else you would like to share with the Board about your interest in this position?
Thank you. I think what I would like to share with the Board is, that whether or not I get selected, you're kind of stuck with me. The only reason you haven't seen me at meetings is because I'm in this rather tough caregiving situation right now. But, I'm firmly committed to this district. And, I'm, over the years, I've served in different capacities, on different, interestingly enough, I was thinking about that, I'm like, "Oh, this is so interesting." I'm not actually a PTO mom. I've, I've served more on district-wide committees than I have in my kids' classroom. I'm not quite sure what that says about me. But, I, I think, reflecting on it, I believe it's because I've often had a big picture or a systems approach to what I'm thinking about. And that's why it made sense to serve on those committees. And I'm grateful for the opportunity for those that I was invited to serve on. And, I think, not I think, I know that I am committed to the students. And, I believe that successful teachers are what lead to successful students. So, not just the students, but the teachers. And overall, unfortunately, I have witnessed situations where there's been very tense, very combative, very adversarial relationships on the Board. I've seen adversarial relationships between the Board and other stakeholders. And I, what I've seen in all of that is that it is ultimately the students who suffer. It is our children who suffer. And so, I'm willing to expend the time, energy, and whatever talent I have to make sure that that doesn't happen, to the best of my ability. And ultimately, I'm just a mom. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. That concludes our questioning. Okay, at this time, myself and my fellow Board members will take our score sheet. Well, let's walk through what the expectation is in terms of scoring. So, you're going to write your first-place candidate's name, and their score. So, you're, we're going to write down the points related to that first place. So, in this instance, first place is two points. Your set, or, first choice, I should say. First choice is two points. Your second choice is one point. And then, our third candidate choice would receive zero points, in terms of ranking. And then, once we've submitted, or collected our, our votes and our thoughts, we then hand it over to Mr. Tiskowitz for tallying.
We, we don't need to write all three candidates. We just write our first.
You can't, yeah.
You want us to write all three?
Yes, because all three were here in interviews. Let's write all three, please.
Do we need to, we need to write our name on here also?
Yes. Please write your name on your score sheet.
The meeting's over. It's fine. It's fine.
Do we need to write their full names?
I'm looking it up, so I'm writing the full names.
Or do you want me to say them out loud?
Oh, you know what? I think I, I can ask some.
Who do we hand it to?
Uh, to Kurt. Okay, I have, nope.
So, for consideration, just, just to remind everyone, the full names of each of the candidates. We have Amina Ahmed. We have Rockland Johnson. And we have Ahashem Osirion.
No, I'm not done.
I'm sorry. Apologize. Yes, you do. You have time.
Yeah, I'm still writing their names. It'll be a minute. I'm done now. Got the names.
The names was the hardest part.
Do you want these back?
We can collect them at the end of the meeting. Yes, we can do that.
This is a longer meeting. This is really intense. Addie, is, is yours just missing the thing, or is there a different kind of microphone?
I think it's missing the, well, it's also really wobbly. It looks like you're missing this top piece. It's missing the top part. But, it's also like.
Lanyard? Put pennies, put murkies and pens in my lanyard. So, I just have them. Works better than taking kids.
What's that?
The mother's book. So, I don't forget.
Watch it, right?
Where we said the three, four times.
All fun.
For the first, first two, nine. Nine separate times.
Oh, no, it makes me nervous.
This is very exciting.
Is it?
It is exciting. It is exciting. Yes, I would like, I would like to invite the candidates back in, in the room, please.
2012, there was an opening on the Board.
I'm sorry.
They didn't trust me.
In 2000, oh, you.
In 2012, there's about thirty people that applied.
That's what we had.
Was that like? With you, there was five.
No, 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 that's what we had when we had LaRonde.
Yes.
For me, I think it was five.
So, I want to thank everyone again for your time. You made this an incredibly difficult decision for us. I am happy to report that we have made a consensus or a selection here, and the open board seat is going to Amina Ahmed. Where's Amina? Oh, I didn't see you. I'm sorry you left. I want to thank the other candidates for enduring our questioning, and being here today to, you know, share your commitment for our district. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point in time, I would like to invite Amina up to, up to the podium here. To be, oh, do we have to vote? Oh, I'm sorry.
We have to vote first.
Thank you, I don't have the agenda in front of me anymore. Thank you. Okay, so, we have an action item. Thank you, Treasurer Kehoe, for pointing that out. So, we have an action item number 25-10-20. Consider approval of a resolution for a school board vacancy appointment. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for a school board vacancy appointment. This will be action item 251020, and it'll be a first and final reading.
Okay, can I have a second?
A second.
Second. Okay, so, it was actually moved by Treasurer Kehoe, and seconded by Vice President McCoyn. Can we actually read the resolution before we vote? Do you, since you have it up, do you mind reading it?
It was moved by Member Kehoe, and seconded by Member McCoyn to appoint Amina Ahmed to fill the vacant seat on the Plymouth Canton Community Schools Board of Education effective October 1st, 2024, to December 31st, 2026.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to call for the vote. Those in support, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries six to zero. Okay, and at this point, we would like to invite Amina up to be sworn in as a new Board member.
Just to the microphone.
Dr. Merritt loves doing this. We should call him. He'd probably show up.
So, I will ask that you repeat after me, and hold up your right hand. I would state your name.
I, Amina Ahmed.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Of member of the Board of Education of Plymouth Canton Community School District.
Of member of the Board of Education of Plymouth Canton Community School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, and at this point, this actually concludes our meeting.
May I give one quick announcement?
Yes, you may.
We will do your official board picture with the new group of seven, prior to the start of the meeting next week, October the 8th. So, come, prepare to be picture-ready.
Oh, okay.
So, we'll, probably 6:45?
Yeah.
Just a few minutes early. And you'll take your group shot, and then we'll have the individual picture for.
Great. Do we have, do we have a special meeting? Just beforehand? We have our expulsion training?
Perfect. So, Ms. Raze, we'll get the, are we going to get life touch before, or in between the special? Maybe we should probably do it before.
Oh, perfect.
So, we will let everybody know in Board notes about when we'll take in the picture.
Okay, appreciate that. Okay, and I will adjourn the meeting at 8:47 PM. Thank you, everybody.